June the 14th, 2011. Order. The next agenda item is citizen comments for items that are not on the agenda. Does anyone that would like to make a comment? I see none. We'll continue to move on. I'd like to consider all the event permit requests considered as one if no one has an opposition. Sure. Which one would you like to consider separately?
The one that the number of the... It says for the Highway 96.
Let's take three, five, six, seven. Is everybody okay with three, five, six, and seven? Okay. Then we'll go to number four then. Which is consideration of event permit for YWCA Viva La Diva run to be held on November the 19th. The organizers are actually here and they could answer any questions and they have...
It's just about the route that the police department says they... They said they were moving the route. Hey, we need some Halloween.
Yes, ma'am.
And so I have a concern about that. I guess is this a Saturday morning?
Yes, it is.
But still, there's a lot of traffic there on Highway 96.
We're going to do it in that section, 96. There's a white shoulder that we'll use. And we're going to call in the... Basically, the outer lane. And we're going to run cones between the two lanes from where we go on the 96 to where we head for off. About a half a mile home.
Could you grab the microphone there, please? And state your name and sorry we let you get away with that.
I'm sorry. My name's Larry Holmes. I'm on the organizing committee for the Viva La Diva event. And I'm familiar with the course and so I was responding to the question about the course being on Highway 96. And basically, what we worked out with the police is that we would put cones down the left lane. And if you were... The runners will be on the left-hand side of the road. We'll reuse the shoulder plus the outer lane. And we'll put cones between the outer lane and the inner lane, if you will. So there'll be three out of the four lanes will be open for traffic. And we'll have police and cones to provide, you know, safety and all that kind of stuff.
I was just concerned because it is Highway 96 days, which is very heavy travel. And I knew that there were some off-duty groups that did not know about that.
That's correct.
Do you have a comment, Chief?
We've recommended the hiring of 12 off-duty officers. So in addition to the on-duty component, we feel that that would be more than sufficient.
As I say, it was a concern because the rest of them are on, you know, the rest of the possible ways, travel ways, were not really on anything that's that as heavily traveled as that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Okay. Number eight. Consideration of Resolution 2011-28, a resolution of the Board of Mayor and Alderman for the City of Franklin Employee's Pension Plan Providing a Cost of Living Adjustment to the Monthly Benefit for Retired Recipients. This has been through pension and passed.
Yeah, we looked at it from... In the pension committee and reviewed that. And it did pass. The pension committee with recommendation that go to the full board for approval then. So it's coming to the workshop. But if it did have the pension, pension committee's full approval.
One point... Go ahead. It's 1.3 percent.
The comment that I have though on the resolution that says it will make effective July 1, 2012? Is that correct? It should be 2011.
No, it should be 2011.
It's on the resolution on our meeting.
Good pick though.
Sorry.
And they will debate... They would get it at their payment at the end of July?
Actually, it will be effective July 1. We will not have time to get it because we figured it. But by the time we get it to SunTrust, they have to have it by the 15th. And it has to be approved. So by the time we get the resolution, it won't go into the checks until the August check, which will be the end of July. But it will be retro to for the month of July.
Well, as I say, the main thing I was concerned about was that date.
Thank you.
On the resolution, it's wrong. And everything else is replaced right. So if you'll make that amendment during the...
I'm sorry. I apologize.
No problem. Number nine. Consideration of Contract Law for Stop Loss Insurance for Employee and Retiree Health and Pharmacy Programs for a One-Year Term Effective July 1, 2011. Contract to be reviewed and approved by City Administrator, City Attorney, and Human Resources Director.
Do you want to address this, Tammy? Do you want me to?
We had our consultant Cheryl Morgan, in conjunction with our purchasing department, Brian Wilcox, bid this out. We actually had one company bid on it, who is our current stop-loss carrier. It will be, as you can see with the attachment, approximately a 15 percent increase. And then the renewal. Actually, the... And Tammy, you might can address this better. Actually, when we got the cost back and compared it to our current 2010-11, we have decided to do the 1212 instead of the 1215, which will actually lower our cost. And that just simply means that we will not have a three-month runout claim. Next year, they are advising us to do it where we do it, 2412, if that's correct. And that will pick up all costs. And it's a way to save money and to change the plan. So if we go with new carriers, it will be covered. They will pick up the cost.
So we wouldn't be running three months over into the existing carrier and a new carrier picked up and two carriers?
Exactly. We wouldn't be paying for the same.
Any other questions? Number 10. Consideration of Soul Source Maintenance Agreement with Physio Control Incorporated Redmond, Washington for the Service and Repair of the Department Automated Defibrillators and Cardiac Monitors for the Year Beginning June 1, 2011 in the Amount of $12,549. Any...
Any questions on that?
What departments does that include? Is that just the fire department? Is this on board? Or is it... What are we talking about?
Well, it is the fire department. But we also have defibrillators and AEDs in other parts of the building, too.
Right.
That need to be tested.
And the police station as well. Is that covering all of those or just...
That includes.
All of it?
Yes. Yes.
It's not just fire?
It's not just fire. Then we have several of those.
I know. Because we have them on different floors, the police station as well. So that includes all of them.
Yes. But the ones that the firefighters have are much more advanced than the ones that are can be used in emergency.
Hanging on the wall.
Right. Even though those have to be tested.
So that covers all of what we own?
Yes, as far as I know. It does.
We can verify that circulated. Number 11. Consideration Professional Services Agreement with Wiser Company LLC for the Design of the Traffic Signal at the Intersection of Del Rio Pike and Magnolia Drive in the Amount Not to Exceed $15,700. Mr. Gardner.
This is for an emergency repair, the signal at Del Rio and Magnolia. It's been... It started leaning. I guess it was observed to be leaning about a month or so ago. So, Street Department, in conjunction with one of our contractors, removed it, put up temporary signals. This is for the design to replace it. What they'll do is they'll do some borings, investigate what kind of soils are there, come up with the design, and replace or reset the existing poles. So they'll reuse the poles. This... It's... This design pretty much covers kind of a worst-case scenario. If they have to go in with a fairly large footer, have to go in and possibly get into right-of-way, look at utility conflicts that may be there. It's all to cover any kind of problem that may come up with it.
And there is some insurance that covers a portion of it, did I understand that?
Well, we've got, I think our deductible's $25,000. So...
No.
No. Want to go over that?
The work...
Now, wait. This is just for the design of it. The construction of it is probably going to be more...
Actually, the design, if it's this worst-case scenario, the design will probably be more. Because it's our existing poles. You're not going to have to replace them. All they're going to have to do is determine what size foundation it's got to be. It's going to be concrete and steel. And then replace or reset the existing poles.
So the reason it failed was because the ground underneath the connection for...
Yeah. We think it's the soil that just kind of gave way, so...
Don't they check that before they put something like that up? I mean, this is what, late 2008?
Seven or eight, yeah.
This is three years old?
Yes. Yeah. Most of the time, there's... Not always is there a shot or a drill taken at exactly where certain structures are. Especially when you have larger structures, bridges and things like that. Soil, rock, conditions change. And this is just one of them that I guess we didn't have the information exactly what it was like there. So... And that's why, like I said, it's a little bit of worst-case scenario. We're going to make sure that it's right this time. And hopefully, we won't have this problem again.
Well, it took forever to do Del Rio.
Yeah. So...
Thank you.
Yeah. It was a good project.
That was sort of my question is what kind of guarantee would we have that this may not or should not happen again? And is that something that we can expect going forward?
Well, with all of our projects, you know, we typically have a one-year warranty period. In this case, I'm sure we'll have the same type of warranty. Sometimes we do ask for longer warranties. Those cost us more. Just like if you're buying whatever and you buy an extended warranty, it's going to cost you a little bit extra. But in this case, we are paying for a specific design. So this design will... Should cover this intersection. So if something, you know, if something happens, we could possibly go back on the designer this time.
Okay. Number 12. We're going to pull. And we'll also need a motion at the board meeting to defer until the next meeting. Number 13. Consideration of Liquor License Retailer Certificate for the Corner Wine and Spirits.
Thought we did this.
Third time's a charm. ABC is requiring that the second owner be listed on the license. So we have had our staff attorney, Kristen Korn, working with the owner's attorney. Mr. Chief?
Yes, ma'am.
And I think we've got it down pat this time.
Okay.
Any questions?
Will you leave that up to Ms. Lemon?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 14. Continued discussion on the fiscal year 2011-2015 CIP prioritization.
Now, a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Parker sent out the list. And had just asked you to prioritize those that are on the list in white by this coming Friday. And I understand there may be some questions which we'll try to answer, David, Russ, or Eric, Russ, and myself. So we could spend some time this evening. And if we need to come back, we can do that. But let me start by maybe reviewing the list that was provided to you in your packets. In the first page, you have three different colored... Colors of projects. The first one, the Mack Hatcher, which is in yellow, really designates that the city has spent its funds and it's really in the state's hands. Doesn't need to be ranked. The next three were approved back in 2009, as you recall. And those were the three that were prioritized at that time. And we're moving forward with those. And have certain funds to expend and have expended. The next group in blue are the small projects that we've talked about and prioritized previously. And granted, on page two of it, with the Eastern Flank Battlefield, we're having some additional discussions to look at options. Some relate to grants as we can move that forward. And then the green with McEwen Drive and Wilson Pike, that's with the schools that is moving forward. And the county school board is mostly responsible for. So then below the heavy black line on your list are the numerous other capital projects. And if you have some questions, Eric can pull some of them up on the screen that are in our CIP book. And we can try and answer the rest of them.
Yes, sir.
This is our chance to go over all the work you did on the Eastern Flank Battlefield. Background for people that weren't at CIC last week. The Eastern Flank... The City of Franklin Battlefield Commission met last Thursday. And with the... Well, with Eric and David, were able to go through some of the existing plan on the loop road. And they identified a number of places where we could cut back, use existing pavement, use existing parking lots, not build all the parking that we had planned at this time, but hold that for future dates. And came up with a very reasonable amount to add to the $369,000. Can you go ahead and show what kind of things that...
Yeah. This is the... This first one here is the overall plan. And this was... This was based on, I guess, the master plan that was done a few years ago. As you can see on the screen, it's a loop road coming off of Lewisburg Pike, kind of down on the bottom, towards the right half, maybe more in the middle. You can see the parking with the circle. I don't have a pointer, but...
It's the gray. Yeah, gray.
Yeah. I can zoom in on it. Here's the... This was the proposed parking. Oh, good. Vernon's got it. Let me zoom back out so you can see the whole extent of it then. I'll point at this one, if that's all right. But there you can see the parking. This was all proposed parking, plus some additional parking over here. The road came off the roundabout here with a connection over to Fleming Center. And then the road went to the west and then continued around as a loop. What we looked at last week and presented, first, we looked at eliminating some of this parking here. Rather than having... And I don't remember the exact number on there, but it's maybe in the 80s, 90s, number of parking spots there. We talked about just, really just building these two rows, still leaving this outer portion of it because that's where the bus parking would be. And then, kind of the other big change... And let me go to this other... It's more of a zoomed-in look. Instead of coming over here, going through the tennis courts and going through the existing parking area, we talked about staying over here on the side where the... Where existing traffic goes through. That way, you could leave the existing parking rather than build additional parking. The reason that the road was over here in the master plan, there was talks of building an orchard or a grove area. But you could still... You could still plant in some of these areas here. But you would be able to utilize the existing asphalt, existing parking over here. And that cut back a lot on, not just the new asphalt, but it cut back significantly on demolition. I think the price tag on demolition alone was about $200,000. So those were the ideas that we brought forward. And the... Is it commission or task force?
Commission.
The commission.
Battlefield Commission, City of Franklin.
I think everybody was pretty unanimous on their recommendation. And they liked eliminating the extra parking over here, eliminating the parking here, and staying on the existing asphalt rather than cutting through and demolishing some and adding new asphalt. The width that... The preferred width was 18 feet. And the preference was to build the complete loop. I know last year when we talked about this, we talked about just tying into the existing asphalt in here now and then building the rest of the loop at another time. But the unanimous decision the other day was to complete the entire loop.
The additional cost for the remainder of the loop there? Remind me again how much you said that was that...
Let's see if I've got it.
Just to show what the difference...
It was... Loop completion, $160,000, $167,000.
For $160,000 more, we can complete the loop, provide access to the remainder of the park. So it's not just a driveway. That it gives us access to the rest of the park and the interpretive stops and signage that will have a park and not just a driveway. We've got interest from other groups to help define what those interpretations should be and to help raise funds for that, too. This is exciting because this will help finish this project that the city invested so much with their public-private partnership. And this also... You know, we had another couple of projects on the small... The small projects list that part of our reason for funding those was that the city had promised that parts of those roads or the signals or things would be... Well, the city essentially promised Heath Place that the access to this park would not be on Corinth Lane. So these are citizens and they expect us to uphold this promise. This is workable. And the final cost, additional cost was only...
It was a little over $800,000. Eight forty-three.
So if we subtract the 369 from that, it's only...
A little under $400,000. I mean, a little under $500,000.
Why are we subtracting 369?
Because 369 is already committed.
So that doesn't mean it goes away. It would be the additional amount that we...
The additional amount to do this park, in addition to the 369, would be...
What was the 160 that you mentioned?
No, that shows the difference in what a loop road would cost as opposed to a two-lane that would just go...
Where we had stopped... Where we talked about stopping at the tennis courts.
Okay. So additional monies would only be $400 and...
Eighty? $490,000?
$490,000.
I would just... I would just like a... I'd just like a number to put in my total over here.
So in the blue line here...
Well, let me go over that again, in which your mic is speaking about your...
We're going for the same thing again.
It's... Well, not really. It's a small project that you've already funded up to $369,000. We're talking about not small projects this evening. And it's the rest in this list. We're confident that as we go forward, we'll work through and come up with a solution. Whether it's via some grants from the state, some donations, in-kind donations, monetary donations, or some other type of funding, probably through a combination of small and capital projects to complete that road. That'll be in the future. But what we're looking for now is trying to have each of you prioritize the remaining top 10 so we can combine them, put them together, show them to you, so you know which is each important to you individually. You've already been given the list from David, myself, Mr. Stukey, and Russ, what we think is a good package. But we want, it was your choice to come back and prioritize them, and then we would look at them comprehensively again.
All right. But we have taken off the Eastern Flank Battlefield roadway. That is not supposed to be in...
It's not in your ranking.
It's not in your rankings.
But if we need to put it... What if we want to put it number one and we've got to add this extra money to it? Should it not be listed as a priority number one?
Not at this time because...
Excuse me?
Let me go back again, please. And I know this is... Can be confusing. The sheet that we've provided you, okay? In the front page, you have three different colors. The first one is Mack Hatcher. It's in yellow. That signifies that the city has spent its share of money and it's really in the state's hand, okay? The next three are the projects that were approved, capital projects via Resolution 2009-44, that you had prioritized. We're working on those as we speak. We've invested some design money, acquisition money, and those are in the process. And we reviewed those with you all...
They cannot fall.
A month... They cannot fall away. The ones in the blue are the small projects that we've already committed those funds to and we're working towards. Granted, Eastern Flank Battlefield will likely need some more funding based on the battlefield commissions and staff's recommendations. However, we do know that there's some grants that are pending, maybe this year, next year. There's some of our generous residents and entities that may provide some in-kind or monetary donations. And we'll bring that back to you of how we'll complete that at a different time. What we're looking for in the ranking is everything below that dark line on the second page that are all the capital improvement projects that are within our manual so that we can have a comprehensive conversation of which ones to fund. And a little bit ago, we did provide you with a list of what staff thought was a reasonable compilation of a group of those, a small group.
I'd like to move on and let's discuss what's in the white.
No, we need to finish and clarify this. Because part of this has been changed since we were given the original...
Alderman Peterson. Should I say that a year ago, whenever we ranked the small projects, there were two separate options for Eastern Flank Battlefield. Some of us voted for one of them, some of us voted for another one. If those had been one option, it would have by far... It would have outranked all the rest of them by far. I mean, it had... Would have had like 70-something points. As it was, because it was two separate things, we, you know, it was not actually number one on that list there, although it should have been if you added those together. So my question is, and I mean, we're talking about spending money. There is no grant for this year. We've already been told that. I think we need to have this as a priority, the extra $500,000, if you want to round it off, or whatever number it is. I think it needs to be a separate number to be voted on, to be prioritized, because that money has not been committed. I'm afraid it'll fall through the cracks if we don't. I would like to see it as an individual.
Are you saying that we should be waiting for the grants and the donations and the in-kind to come?
I can address some of the discussions that have gone on. And some of the discussions have concerned going ahead and doing the actual drawings for the road so that we really know exactly what it's going to cost. And then go forward with the idea that there's a great possibility we'll get the grant next year. I think that, at least from the aspect that I've been working from, is that we're going to make this road happen.
Okay. So we don't have all the information?
Going forward.
Yeah.
There may be some other discussions that have occurred between all of the groups that have to do with the battlefield that could possibly bring something forward. So I'd hate to see us put all the eggs in this basket quite yet. Put a footnote or something. And we're not going to have more opportunity to discuss this particular project, maybe with more options than what we're looking at tonight, hopefully.
I'd like to respond to some of this. I've talked to Andrew Orr about the... We're not going to ignore a future grant with the state for enhancement. Matter of fact, last year, they had to enhance the project because it was... Matter of fact, last year, they had to enhance the project because it wasn't really just for a road. The state wants enhancement and not building a road. So now we can actually ask for ancillary things once we get the basis of the road put in, but the road is, is primary for us to begin to plan beyond that. This project is having to go through two votes, you know. Last year, we tried to do things with design bill that we found out were not legal, you know. There are so many other projects that are costing more than five hundred thousand and this has such an economic impact on our heritage tourism. And if we dawdle and keep saying, well, this might come in and that come in, we're going to look past the sesquicentennial and, and wonder if we did everything we could to maximize our tourism during this period.
I, I think from my standpoint, you know, I'm committed to try to make this project happen before the end of next year. And that's the direction I'm working.
That's what I need to hear.
As best I can at this point in time, and that's been the discussions I've had with Mr. Stuckey up to this point. Go ahead, Alderman.
Well, I don't want to sound like a wet blanket, but this is not a small project. It should not be listed as a small project, and it should not get preferential treatment by, by assuming some kind of we'll get it done status and therefore left out of the rankings. Because it sounds to me like the conversation is leading toward this is a given, now go rank all the others. That's not what this process is supposed to be about. This process is supposed to be about rank all the things that you might like to spend money on, and like it or not, eight hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, eight hundred and something thousand dollars. Now, this project should rise or fall on its own merits by the vote of the entire board, not take some super project status out of this meeting and become something that gets done no matter what, now go figure out the rest of these. And, and I've, the conversation that I've heard leads me to think that it's drifting into this, we're going to make it happen no matter what, status. That's not the way this project, this CIP prioritization is supposed to work. It might get first ballot Hall of Fame status out of everybody, but if it does, fine. But if it doesn't, then it should be no more valuable or important than what the board's collective wisdom is about regular old asphalt. I mean, people need streets, okay? And, and throwing about sesquicentennial and all that, those things matter, but they don't, they don't lead to the inevitable conclusion that we're going to, we're going to do this. This project, I believe, this project needs to be put in for ranking, just like everything else, and removed from the small status, small project status, because it isn't that anymore. We can't shoehorn it into that. It's not that.
The reason it's not listed with the other projects is because the board has taken action to say that you're going to fund it. Now, you could, I mean, you can make the same?
But we said that with no price tag.
Right, but you could say, but you could say the same, but you could say the same thing with Hillsborough. You have agreed to fund it, but if, if it turns out that it's going to be thirty million dollars instead of twenty-six million dollars or whatever it is, this is about prioritization and not funding. You will come back later and actually determine the funding, but the, the direction that the board has given staff is, this has been funded, take it out, and that's, and that's why we did not include it.
I'm not faulting staff for listing it the way it did. I'm saying that now that we have a, because when it went in, we were talking about grant money and a couple hundred thousand small project, okay? It's not that, and it will not be that again. It has changed. It has lost its status as a small project that we were committed to doing sort of off, not off the books, differently. It isn't that.
Mayor, could I, could I offer?
Sure, go ahead.
Because I, I think it certainly, it has, the, the scope of the project has gone beyond what was originally intended. It would not hurt at this juncture if you wanted to include that in the ranking, just that particular one, because as Eric had mentioned, we're going to come back and then look at the funding of it. Because the intent of the prioritization was so each of you individually could see what was important to you and then also see what staff recommended, which we had provided you, and then come back and see what we really can afford. And some of that, as Eric Stuckey had mentioned, might involve just designing, starting to design on, on some of it, and with the understanding of going forward with more funding as, in future years. But I would recommend to, if you believe that that should be included because it now has elevated to a higher dollar value, to put it in with the others, and that wouldn't, wouldn't hurt at all.
And I think it's also elevated to a more important issue than it ever was before because this is very important to the economic development of this town.
It also allows us to stay true to our process.
Can I say something, not about, not about this latter discussion, but the comment was made before that some people have been promised something, and, and I want to say to you, not only in the context of this, but in some other things that we've had, for instance, the Monticello Zoo, or when it says people were promised something, let me tell you, the board, as you're saying, the board of mayor and Alderman makes the decision. No one person or group of people can promise that something is going to get done. I think, and so maybe that moves to your comment that this needs to be a part of something, not that we're promising, but that it is a priority for the entire board. So as I say, that really doesn't have anything to do with the last part of what we're talking about, but the fact that people were promised?
I do have one more comment because it's, it's really germane to this type of project. As you know, Franklin Tomorrow and has formally set up the Friends of the Franklin Parks that provides an opportunity for our residents and business partners to make donations for certain improvements in, in our park system. And that, as many communities have found, will really be the genesis of making some meaningful improvements that, that we can supplement with, with our resources. So it's really a true partnership, and as Mayor Moore, Alderman Skinner has mentioned, there has been talk about this road, about how others can participate in that, and we had tried to do that last year. So hopefully, this will be the start of some bigger and better things to come. But I encourage you to include that so we can start having a meaningful conversation about which ones that we can direct staff to move forward on.
I think that's a good point as far as just ranking where you think it fits, and then we'll work as far as trying to figure out how to fund it.
Okay, and let me tell you, there are two things then that are enumerated as Park Three. They said up here it's called Park, Park Three. Over here on the next page, there's another Parks Three. So it says Eastern Flank, other than the access roadway. So let's get this cleared up so that all of us who are wanting to vote for this, vote for, I mean, don't, don't call them the same name, because I was going to go through the, this and, and name mine, you know, like this, and so I, I want it, I want it to be accurate because that other time, there were two different ones, and so people voted for two different, supported two different projects.
Well, the one in blue says roadway, the other one says other than?
Other than the access?
Well, but as I say, I had a problem because they didn't know what I was voting for on some of the things before, because whenever you tried to put the name in, it meant different things to different people.
Okay, so question. So Park Three in the blue says Eastern Flank Battlefield Access Roadway. So if we put a priority ranking in there, we know that's the roadway. Next page that Anne was saying, Eastern Flank Battlefield Improvements, other than the access roadway, what improvements are we talking about? If I want to rank that, how do I know what improvements we're talking about?
Right, in the book on Parks, page three, that's, yes, that's, that's what that's referring to. If you go, if you go to your book, you go to Park, the Parks section, page three, it'll have the roadway. It, it has the total project.
Yeah, I saw that.
It has the total project. And the reason why this one has two different Parks, Phase, Parks Three, it's just like some of these other things that have multiple phases. It's all on one sheet, but it, it would be listed, you know, Phase One would still be Parks Three, and Phase Two would be Parks Three, and so forth.
Okay, so these are just page numbers? They're not rankings by the department?
It's all explained on that page.
Those are in, those are in the manual that you can look at. And with respect to your particular question on the Eastern Flank Battlefield, that master plan is more than you can probably ascertain from the one page in our CIP manual, and I would encourage you to speak with Parks Director Clayton on having a more thorough discussion on what those improvements are.
I'd also like to know what they are if I don't have time to go in and ask about every one of them. You see, that's what I was thinking about. If you don't have time to go in and spend a day finding out about all of these, so that in order for us to rank them, I wanted to have, you know, the list.
And those are, that's in the manual.
But, but as you say, one, one of this, one page has several parts to it.
Here's the dilemma.
Didn't you just say that? Didn't you just say page three on Parks?
Well, with respect to that master plan on, on Eastern Flank Battlefield, that's on page three, it encompasses a two-point-two million dollars worth of improvements, and you can see what, in a very, in a snapshot, what those improvements are.
Here's, here's one thing I'd like to say. This is why, I think we talked about this before, this is why I think we need a CIP meeting with nothing else. We need to sit down here for an hour and a half and talk about what we're talking about. I hate it when it's in a work session because we've got all these other things on the agenda, and we could talk to the, we could talk about this for another half an hour or more because I think these are too important. Each, each ward alderman needs to spend time on each of these subjects, each of these listings to say why, what's going on. We need to make sure, because I've already had some people ask me about the McEwen projects, two or three McEwen projects, and they don't know one from the other. And ward aldermen should know their ward well enough to say, well, we know what's going on in these projects, and this is why we're asking for you all to consider this project as priority versus the other two McEwens or whatever. And so we're talking here tonight, and honestly, I don't think we're giving this justice, and I think, you know, Vernon and Eric, you have a lot to add to this that we need to hear. We have a lot of, I think we need to hear from each of the board aldermen, I think we need to hear from the at-large aldermen, I think we need to be talking about this. And I frankly think we need a separate meeting for it. And if it says that we don't turn it down on the seventeenth, fine, let's have a meeting, and let's turn it in later because I think we need to do it right.
Well, I think we still, I will, with the board, so I think if we need, want that, then we need to, we need to make that recommendation.
Well, I feel, I feel bad about the fact that I've already turned mine in.
You can have it back.
I've already quieted that back. I've already turned it in.
Get it back.
It says it's funded by hotel motel tax. Do we have, do we have that, do we have that eight hundred and something thousand dollars in hotel motel tax?
We don't have enough money to go tell motel tax.
Too many questions.
I can comment just a little bit about it because we've had some of the discussions, you know, the conference center will be paid for, I believe it's like the first or the second month in 2014, if I'm not correct. And that, with Drury coming online, there may be some more, maybe some more hotel motel tax. So at least some of the discussions that we've had, just brainstorming about it, there may be some more money, but I don't, I don't think anybody knows how much, it just comment that there is going to be some more.
What I would, I'd like to add to, add to that, Alderman Barhamill, is that, and hopefully you concur, is that it's really our sta, the staff's responsibility to take the projects that you identified, prioritize, and look at the construction schedule, and this is a great example, and forecast what our facilities tax will, income will be and where we're applying it to the different projects. It's hard to have that conversation if we can't create the model that prioritizes the projects. And while there's a lot of questions to be had, some more detailed than others, if we can start before the meeting that we get on the CIP, to do your best on prioritizing them, that at least helps us staff come prepared to what we think that model will start to look like. There's no way that we'll be able to finalize it, and yes, we all have questions, but we can start to put together those ideas because not any of these projects, there might be one or two, can be done within one fiscal year. They're going to span a couple or more years, just like we see with Hillsborough Road obviously.
Alderman Martin.
All right, if we, I know what you want us to do. You want us to do what he's already done.
He'd give me any if he was in your class, right?
He would.
I would need it.
I don't want to be this person. I do not think, I don't think that the people that are sitting in this room have an interest in our sitting here and wasting their time and arguing about these things. I think we need a separate, a separate meeting. I tried to talk about this last week at the CIP meeting, and nobody would talk about it because the meeting was over. And they said, well, we're going to talk about it at the work session. Here we are at the work session, and we still don't have anything to, to do. So if we could have a meeting, and we'll give you something, we'll give you something that you can chew on, and then we can talk about these things. But do, would you all agree to do that?
I want a meeting.
I don't want to do it.
I've asked for a meeting all along.
Well, we all have. We all have.
No, no.
Well, not all of us.
We're getting it straightened out, we're not all of us.
But I don't think, I don't think?
I feel a wave of enthusiasm being created for an extra meeting.
I don't think, if people in this room need to hear all this, they're, this is wasting their time.
We want it done right.
And you're not, we're not making any firm decisions, we're just trying to put all of our ideas together, and we'll have a meeting, and that'll be the first thing that Russ and I pass on.
And if it has to be televised, fine.
Yes.
I don't see any reason for it to be, but if you want to televise it, that's fine.
I see a wave at the end of the table.
All right, so do I or do I not turn in this list by Friday?
No, yes.
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 Then why are we having?
Why am I going to have a meeting?
I don't want?
To talk about the mistakes I made?
You're going to give some initial, give some direction to staff so they can pull out a lot of these other projects, is my understanding.
Then are we going to re-rank after this meeting? What would the point of the meeting be?
The point of the meeting will be for us collectively to take a look at what of those projects are important to each of you, and to already have staff some idea of where we can combine and fund that small group of projects.
Yeah, question. How do they do that when I've had two aldermen say to me, okay, I've got three projects down here from McEwen, I don't know which one is which, and I don't know, so they don't know how to, they don't know how to prioritize it and rank it, of course, yeah, I know it's in there, but I'll drive you all around, come over, I'll drive you and show it to you. But you got to see it, you got to know it.
Well, no, it's in there. I mean, if you want, if you want to do phases, it's, it's not in there that way.
You can look at a book all day long, but until you're actually physically at the place saying, oh my gosh, okay, see this, see this, you understand it. I drive around, you know, I try to actually go to these places and look at these things before I figure out, you know, and I, I can read it in the book, but it helps to do that.
Lord help us if Alderman Berger ever becomes a congressman.
I'll be running around my district.
A lot of it will be entered into the record, right? So if I could summarize, oh, you got a question.
Is that the thing that they sent to us that we're supposed to put our numbers in?
You sent that to us?
No, 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 this is, this is?
You sent us one then. I want that.
You want the one that has everybody's name on it?
Yes.
I want to know what I can put down.
That's just the voting tabulation.
That's what I want. I want a voting.
You can't have it till you rank them.
No, 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 that's where you can put your numbers in.
You want that to put your numbers in.
You have it right here.
Thank you.
I can still rank them, I'm, I'm good.
No, but as I said, when I checked the sign of the team before, it didn't, it didn't count in the right place.
So if I could interpret the wave and enthusiasm, we're going to, you're going to rank them, and then staff will tabulate, and then staff will try to figure out the best way to present it, and we'll have a discussion at a meeting separately for the capital projects.
Actually, I'm in favor of having it first.
I am too.
You want the?
Because otherwise, are we going to have a preliminary ranking and a final ranking?
What we did last year, we ranked them.
Then we can toss them all out and redo them.
We ranked them to every time last year, whenever we changed it.
They're done?
Another meeting, re-ranked them and redid it.
Well, let me just say to those who've asked me? Well, let me just say to those who've asked me, let me just say to those who've asked me, Street 43.
Why are they here?
Street 43.
Margaret, what? Pearl, Street 43. That's the base.
I'm writing mine out right now. I'm almost done.
Street 43 is the McEwen from West Springs, Los Angeles.
Well, I think the tornado system, I think we've got easily cored. I have a lot of great things here, other than our profile ones.
Let's rank them and have a meeting.
Okay, moving on. Number 15.
I'm not sure you know what that is.
I hope we can find it.
Well, if you don't, I can remember it.
Okay, number 15. Consideration of ordinance 2011-16, an ordinance to amend the Title X of the Franklin Municipal Code to clarify applicability of Chapter 1 and to adopt by reference the rules and regulations pertaining to regulations of dogs and cats in Williamson County, Tennessee, as adopted by the County Commission of Williamson County.
Mayor Anderson over at Williamson County came forward and said, hey, we've changed some of our regulations regarding dogs and cats, and we do look to Williamson County to be our animal control for the city. And so basically, this is just asking you as a board to adopt their same rules and regulations regarding dogs and cats, so that we can ask them to enforce those rules so that they match.
You mean put a cat on a leash?
We did not have, the copy of the rules was not in here. I did ask, and I know they gave me one. Yeah, that's right. That was not, that was not sent to us. I mean, not that I haven't disagreed with you, but if we're going to adopt them, we need to have it to read at least.
No, that's not in the voting session.
That's right. But I'm just saying.
We'll get those out.
Isn't this the rules?
But we have it right now.
It is now, but they were, we got them.
It pretty much covers what we've covered in the past. It does. They do have a more comprehensive list of definitions at the beginning. Rabies vaccination and registration is still required. That kind of thing is still pre-standard. It does address prohibition of dog fighting, which is something that we have not addressed in our Title X in the past. And it does still follow the recommendation of pets being spayed or neutered.
We'd be more than happy to put this on the work session for next meeting as well as on the voting, unless you have some objections to that.
All right. Moving on to number 16.
We don't need a special meeting.
No special meeting.
I got a question on that.
On 15?
Yes, ma'am.
If we see something in here that we want to change, do we have the opportunity to do it or to suggest it to them? Or can we adopt something, we can adopt something separate?
We can adopt something separate, but we do look to them to enforce the rules and regulations that we set forth. So it's much easier for them, because we do not have animal control for our city separately.
Because one of the issues I have, and I don't, I haven't studied it well enough, but I know that they don't, well, I do know that they don't have a law against tethering dogs for a period of time, you know.
They've got something in there now.
Yeah, well, they might have changed it. I have to study that because, of course, I just got it, so I haven't had a chance to look at it. But I've had numerous calls about tethering dogs, and they're, you know, being neglected, and we've had some dogs die. People neglect them, they're outside, and they're tethered for.
You need an unlisted number.
I can read a book.
Did you, did you go to that?
I did.
Alderman Berger, page 10, covers that.
Page 10.
Covers that.
Yep.
It's in Section 6, Part B. It's called the Trolley System.
So we'll bring back, back to another work session after we've had a chance to look at it. Next is number 16. This actually was brought forward by Alderman Berger because of a citizen that was interested in potentially creating a revenue-producing facility out of the clubhouse at the Eastern Flank Battlefield. So there has been some meeting and discussion about that with this person. So we're going to, the topic is discussion of facility management for event planning and catering services for Eastern Flank Battle Hall Facility.
Can I say one thing before we get into that? This is not about just one person or one entity or one idea, but the idea is to take a look at the facilities that we own in this town that are not going to be declared surplus, that we're going to own, and for us to get out of the management business of that and try to realize revenue. Because if you look around the United States, the cities, and we're among the foremost of those cities, always thinking outside the box. And if you take a look at our revenues, you take a look at the economy, we've got to start doing these things so that we can help our cities realize more revenue, income from places that are idle or places that we will not necessarily, as a government, want to run or be in charge of in the long term. So this is actually looking forward for the health of the city.
Thank you, Alderman Berger. If I may, the, that is correct. The goal tonight, and it may be that we have to bring this back to another work session, maybe not the CIP one, but a different one, not included in the book. It's to take a look at what, how do we.
Y'all been drinking for the 10 and 9. What a giddy group. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
We need to maximize our resources. Smile a lot. In 2005, we did purchase the property, and 114 acres, as you know. Well, we also obtained over five different facilities on the property. One of the facilities that we're talking about tonight, and so at your place and what's going through on the slideshow, and it'll continue to replay as we speak about this tonight, is the former clubhouse. And with the clubhouse, over the last few months, what we've done is part staff along with other departments, you can see everyone who is involved with this memo, it's really been a citywide-type project, is to take a look at the Eastern Flank, and we've come in and we've done the renovations. Now, what you do have at your, at your place, as long as also it's in the PowerPoint, is a floor plan. So that you understand the square footage, the Eastern Flank Battle Hall is around 8335, so over 8,000 square feet. And basically, everyone, I believe, here has been into that facility and familiar with. But over the last five months, we've gone into the clubroom, what is known as the clubroom. On here is the open room, the main, the foyer, the women's restroom, the men's, the women's locker room, the pro shop, the dining area, bar areas, we call it, and then is the kitchen. And we have renovated. We did have storm damage with the flood in 2010, so a new roof has been placed on the facility, which it was in need. But we also had a lot of water problems within the facility and electrical. So we've gone in and replaced electrical, we've painted, we've done windows, we've replaced carpet, we've cleaned, and we've also gutted an existing kitchen. One of the reasons we had to go to that extreme is because of mold and rotten wood within the facility. So under the direction of the Building Neighborhood Services, that really began, that conversation of why we're here tonight, started with the kitchen. Because what we had, when we've rent this facility currently within the Parks Department, you have a private caterer or a private event planner that comes in, or you may rent it yourselves, and you bring who you want in. Some of the caterers we have spoken to, as well as the others that have rented the facility, is how can we make it better? And one of the things they talked about was a kitchen or prep kitchen. Because caterers need a place, especially this facility is designed to, you approved about four years ago, to allow alcohol. So we do have those types of events with wine and that type of thing. So you do have licensed bartenders that come in and use this facility, along with that party, the private party. So instead of coming back and go ahead and finishing out the kitchen, as a prep kitchen, should we have, should we wait? The design in order to get a contractor to stamp it was around $5,000. And we did not spend that this year. We had it in the budget, but we did not spend it. Which then came about was a meeting of, not only with caterers, but event planners. And since this idea of maybe looking at a public-private partnership has started, we've received numerous phone calls, just so you're aware, from nonprofits within our own community, outside of our community, not-for-profits, caterers who do a lot of their own planning and event planning within, event planners out of Nashville. There are organizations that have contacted us, that that's all they do, and they actually host multiple facilities, and restaurants. We've had several restaurant owners contact us because of the potential that this would have. So in looking at all of that, is I thought it was important that you understand the floor plan and the square footage, you also have an upstairs. And upstairs was used by the clubhouse, the original, of just storage and some office areas. You have two sets of stairs, one out of the kitchen, one right adjacent to the women's locker room. It's not AD accessible. And we just use it for storage right now, but it is, but it is usable space. And it is, again, as the PowerPoint goes through, we are now to the point that as city staff, we believe that we've got some potential here. And where, where do we foresee from the Board of Aldermen, your vision for the next five to 10 years? In the master plan, this facility was supposed to be torn down. That's not going to happen. It's a good facility. I will tell you that. It's a great facility. And the colors right now are very neutral to wear, and we planned that originally when we were doing this, this past winter, because it's also part of what we currently have within our other facilities. We have 30 other facilities in the parks system. So the painting and all of the paint and stuff is the same. It can be changed. All that's cosmetic. But where do you foresee us going with this project? Do we hire new staffing? Does this need to be a job description as a full-time or a part-time person? Does this need to be an RFP process, and the city still hold on to the rental and the special events? Or do you actually go after maybe contracting with someone, going into a long-term lease agreement, and allowing them to event manage? And do the catering, and do anything that might come to that facility? And that's what I present to you this evening. We've got an opportunity. But I will tell you, so that you know some background, right currently, we usually, all of the city departments use that facility for trainings, for different events, and we also, we've got a private business in there this week that's doing a headquarters in town, they're doing a three-day corporate retreat. And so we do, and we've had bar mitzvahs and birthday parties and weddings.
The renting.
The renting it. They're renting it. But we, but we have not reached our potential because we're not renting that facility every weekend, and it should be. We're not renting it three or four days a week, and it should be. And so I bring that to you as, for discussion of what direction.
Thanks, Lisa. You all have done a really good job on this. And the, I would personally like to see us go out for an RFP, because I think there's, you know, I'd like for us to have a discussion on that, because I really don't see the city getting involved in being event planners, and I don't see us hiring on more staff to do this. I don't think that that, in the end, would serve the purposes of where I'd like to see us go in trying to realize more revenue, bringing more revenue for the city. But if we did a public-private partnership, there's all sorts of types of things out there that we could look at, whereas the city could still use that facility, and that we can share revenue, and take the revenue from that to add into our parks and get some of these other projects done that we want to get done as well. But I really, I personally have no interest in the city hiring staff, managing the place, and doing that. I think that's what event planners, caterers, these kinds of people that have contacted you and some of us have an interest in, because that's what they do. That's what they do for a living, they do it well.
And they're well, they do it well.
Personally, I would like to ask that, you know, as we go forward from here, one of the things I would like to ask is that staff would take a look around Tennessee and around the United States of other various, similar facilities, and what they have done in public-private partnerships such as this, where they own maybe a clubhouse or some, I know of a barn right now that was redone and is used by a city, and it's revenue generating for them. So I think we need to look and see what else is out there, how people have utilized their facilities that they've owned on, on city land, and how they've done that, and get some ideas of what's going on.
Sure.
Where are the, where are the other? I mean, you said there were other areas that had not been declared surplus property or whatever, and there were other opportunities besides this. Where are the others?
Well, for.
Where?
Harlinsdale may be, if, once, once we take a look, and if this becomes maybe even a model, then we may want to look at, as, as projects are complete in the system, then we may want to look at Harlinsdale. And whether it's from when the house is restored, and whatever that use is going to be, whether the barn's restored, whatever that use is going to be. We have potential with special events. And this is not the low end, especially with Eastern Flank, you don't have the low end, but you also don't have the high-end renting fees. And so it's very affordable across the board. And we want to stay with quality, and we've had wonderful, wonderful experiences so far in the last four or five years with caterers and special event coordinators onsite. But we also, if, when looking at maybe public-private partnership, that's where an RFP of going through those details of how you can make sure quality is still there.
Alderman.
I just pretty much agree with Alderman Berger that let's look at private, private partnership, and also let's look and see what other cities are doing. See who's doing it well, and let's see if they bring it back to us.
Alderman. We talked about we're not utilizing this as much as we could. Would it be a matter of us contracting with somebody to do PR and advertising? So we still get to keep the lion's share of this, that we don't have to share if we're still in control of this. Secondly, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, please, please, go ahead.
In a former life, I used to have a lot of experience with food service that might be shared facilities. They almost always were a problem because you, inevitably, you would have one party pointing at the other party for this problem or that problem. Not to mention some liability, that if we're still part of the financial picture on this, how is that going to be dealt with on the city side in case there's.
Looking to other cities and see what they're doing.
Well.
Alderman.
Well, the financial part of it is one thing I thought about. Not that I want these answers tonight, but I'm just saying, how much has already been spent on this, and where was that budgeted? How much would the city be required to do on renovation themselves? Because one of the things, you know, we're saying that, another question I would ask is, how much does the city receive for what we're already ready? In other words, the idea has a lot of appeal. However, I do not want the city to go into debt to have to do this. In other words, I don't want to put a big expense out, because you know, when we're talking about some of the other things, like the Harlinsdale, the barn Harlinsdale, we're talking about spending a lot of money to do that. I don't necessarily know that that has to be done here. However, I do say though, that if you're talking about renovating, and again, I'd like to know how much has been spent already and where did it come from? Where was the budget, I should say. And let us look at the money part of it, because that, I think, must play into it.
If, just to recap based on our brief discussion, you're really looking at, what I, at least I heard, is a couple things. First of all, to identify what other communities are doing with respect to privatizing their facilities for use. Looking, as Alderman Peterson just articulated, what we've spent already, what our current rate structure is, how often it's been used, and maybe we can look at a period of time to see what our returns on those investments are. And then come back to you and have a little bit more discussion, and try to show you what the cost benefit would be, staying the course or. be, staying the course or entertaining, uh, some type of, of private partnership.
How much do we charge for a rental?
Currently, the, um, application fee is a hundred dollars for a Williamson County resident. It's five hundred dollars per day on Friday through Sunday and 300 for Monday through Thursday. Non-residents, 700 to 500. Uh, nonprofits of Williamson County, it's 250 per day, 150 during the week, and nonprofits outside of Williamson County, 350 and 250 during the week. We have a $500 damage deposit and with any event, they do pay for city staff, which is a full hour minimum of $25 an hour. So that's where we've been able to, anytime we've had an event, we've had to pay overtime for someone to be onsite, we've charged the party to pay that.
Is, is that a parks person or...
Yes, ma'am. It's a parks person. Yes, ma'am.
I also mentioned that, um... Dana's not here? Good. This year so far, I've gotten five calls for where can I, we have our, where can we have our anniversary party? Where can we have our wedding, my daughter's wedding? And I don't know, maybe I should go into the event planning business too, but honestly, uh, what I found, uh, talking to people around town and the venues around town, that they're booked up a year, year and a half, and people are just, there's no place to have weddings. There is no place to have these anniversary parties, and they're just scrounging, trying to find places to have. And I gave one person three or four numbers of places I thought surely they'd be able to get in within nine months, and they couldn't. So this tells us that people are still looking for these venues that they are in need. And Anne makes some real good points about, yeah, let's find out how much we spent on it. And my, my whole purpose of trying to pursue this is not for the city to spend money. To have a public-private partnership where someone will come in and they will design and do the kitchen and they will put the money into it, and we will do minimal work. And they're out there. They're out there, they're willing and able to do it. There are people that are talking to Lisa about that already, and, uh, so I think, I think we really need to, as Anne said, you know, take a look at those numbers too.
Got direction now? Number 16, uh, I'm sorry, number 17. Consideration of pension investment agreement with Poland Capital Management.
Somebody wanted to speak to that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Yeah, somebody wanted to speak. Lisa was gonna call her.
Excuse us.
You better leave me out of that.
My back was to you and I didn't see you waving. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Mary Weary. I'm with Menu Maker Catering. I'm a native Nashvillian, and I am very interested in the Eastern Flank as a catering kitchen. It has so much potential. Uh, just to give you an illustration, Carnton Next Door has already booked 40 weddings at $3,000 just for the facility, not counting any rental. An average wedding there is probably $10,000. And corporate, there's unlimited number of corporate possibilities. I had a church that came to me this week, this meeting in Brentwood at four o'clock in the afternoon because they couldn't find a facility in Franklin, nor could they find one in Brentwood at church time, so they're having to meet later. So there's unlimited possibilities as far as the Eastern Flank. I did bring some information about the market. Uh, there's over 4,000 weddings in Williamson County each year, and I thought I'd hand that to you to let you take a look at it, and I'd love an opportunity to explore a partnership with you.
The, the square is pretty cheap.
I don't know. I don't know, when you think how much it costs the parks to pick up all the trash afterwards. I'm actually, I'm actually looking at, I have the kitchen, in my licensed kitchen now, and I'm looking for a facility to build business, to promote it. I've been doing event planning and catering for over 25 years in this area, and I know that it can go, I mean, it takes a lot of work. You can't just pass out a few flyers. Uh, I've dealt with over a thousand brides, uh, and they're different than a normal corporate account person. Christmas parties. I had a corporate client today wanting to know where to have a Christmas party, so there's a lot of opportunity and they do book it here. So I'd love any opportunity to explore it with you in detail. Are there any questions or anything I can help you with? Yeah, I should have brought some samples, huh? This is my husband, John, who's going to say something.
Part of the thing is Mary will front all the money that's needed to do all of the upgrades and maintenance and repairs and put the kitchen in and recover it over a five-year period, uh, through rent, and it, in essence, amounts to an interest-free loan to the city of over $120,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next is, uh, going back to number 17, a pension invest agreement with Poland Capital Management.
Yes, I think you have my memo on this. The pension committee was faced several months ago with one of our money managers resigning because they wanted to get out of the equity business. The pension committee went through a process, selected finalists, interviewed those finalists, and ended up selecting this particular firm to manage the portion of our assets that we call large-cap growth. Poland has submitted a contract to us, which I think you have attached, uh, in your packet. Uh, they've agreed to change the, uh, the wording in their, in their standard contract to satisfy our city attorney and pension attorney, so we'll be bringing this to you at the next meeting. Just wanted to bring it, bring it to your attention, uh, and understand that, that we will be bringing this contract. We would like to see it voted on at the next meeting so that we can start them at the beginning of the July quarter.
Number 18, discussion of amendment to fiscal year 2012 budget, including the currently estimated certified tax rate.
All right, there are two things that we would like to see done at tonight's voting meeting. Uh, the first one is, uh, an amendment to the budget. Uh, this does not affect the general fund or any of the numbers that we're, we're most focused on when we do the budget, but we would like to actually reduce the stormwater expenditures for the year. When that budget was put together, all of the approved projects were included in capital. Clearly, we're not going to be able to do all of those approved projects in the next 12 months, so we're asking you to actually reduce the stormwater budget by 1.2 million dollars approximately. You have the number in the, in the memo. Again, a reduction of 1.295 projects and, uh, an increase on, on one payroll line of 59,000. So if we could get one of the, the Alderman to make that, that amendment before we vote on that on the business meeting tonight. The second item is we do have now the official certified tax rate from the, from the tax assessor and the Board of Equalization, and of course, to my chagrin, it's less than what we thought it would be. Uh, that breaks my heart, but I'm sure it will make all of our citizens very happy. Um, the new tax rate will go down from 43 cents to 37.65 cents per hundred. That's roughly about a 13% reduction in the tax rate, and we'll need a motion to the tax rate ordinance tonight from someone, if possible.
Okay. Any questions? Number 19, consideration of ordinance to be entitled, ordinance to amend Chapter 5, Section 5.11.4 of the City of Franklin zoning ordinance, which establishes the exterior lighting standards.
Good evening. This is just a minor amendment to the zoning ordinance for exterior lights. We have had some modification of standards over a period of time and want to make our lighting standards more consistent. Uh, you will see some changes in residential lighting from 16 to 20 feet and from, and in some mixed-use lighting, some additional need for shielding lights that are near neighborhoods. Uh, primarily, it is a very minor amendment, and we would request that, any questions you might have.
But what do you mean 16 to 20 feet?
We are just looking at the poles going from 16 to 20 feet to give you a better lighting...
You mean in height?
In height, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, to just give a better lighting circle. And this did come out of Plan Commission with an eight to zero vote.
And it had been higher and you reduced it, and then it's kind of back up.
It's kind of back up again. We were getting a lot of modification of standards because we weren't able to, many of the businesses weren't able to get the kind of lighting, um, spread that they needed to make sure that they had security and safety.
And foot candle.
How does that, um, okay, over there on, well, there's buildings that back up to the Karen Bridge area?
Mm-hmm.
Residential area. When you put those up, they were 20, they're down to 16, now they're going to go back to 20, right?
Yes.
Um, how, and I know we've, we've talked about, you know, lowering some wattage and the foot candles and everything, but how's that going to affect that? Uh, like if you build another building next to that neighborhood again, or go back up to the 20 feet...
But they will be shielded. They need to have, they need to be shielded within 50 feet of a residential neighborhood.
50 feet. Okay. And, and these are currently not shielded over there?
I do not know whether that particular ones are shielded or not. Gary may be able to answer that.
Nope. They're not shielded. That's why we have the problems that we're having. Okay. So that makes the difference.
So the exterior lighting still, standards will still apply, including the maximum illumination at the property.
That's correct.
Which I think is what you're talking about. That, that still will be in place.
I don't really understand Catherine about lighting in neighborhoods, in residential neighborhoods.
Lighting, yes.
Because it used to be that, that came through the planning department, that was on the plan where the lights are. Now believe that those decisions are being made by Middle Tennessee Electric?
That is correct, and on the plans. The, the location of those, those lights are made by Middle Tennessee Electric, but they still have to meet our criteria in terms of how high they are and the design of the lights.
What about distance between lights?
That is something that Middle Tennessee Electric decides.
Well, I don't know that that's a good thing because Middle Tennessee Electric does exactly what they want to do. And in Willow Springs, there's a big problem with the absence of, of proper lighting, and, you know, they just ought to put them where they want to. Don't you get any complaints over there?
Haven't heard of one in eight years.
I'm getting them all. I'm getting all your hives.
But, but what Margaret says, they are, they are not necessarily located strategically to give lighting up and down.
They are not. They, they have to locate their boxes in certain locations, they have to, and they locate them as they please. However, I don't know that we as a city have a right to locate those lighting poles. I think that is something Middle Tennessee's purview.
We should have a right. We should have a right to have a say in how many they are, there are, and the distance between them, and I would like for us to look into that.
We can do that.
Taking some of that authority back.
See, I thought the developer puts those lights in like in Willow Springs.
The developer puts it, the developer has it on his plan, and they put the lights in, but it, they are cited by Middle Tennessee. Middle Tennessee tells you where they need to go. They, they have the final say on where those lights are.
We could require X number of lights.
Yes.
But they would be the one who would locate those. So if we were concerned about lighting, we would want to be concerned, what we can control is the number of lights going in.
Yes, absolutely. But they also have the right to delete lights if they don't serve their purposes.
I could, I, let me maybe elaborate just briefly on that. It's something that staff is initiating here very shortly is to, to look at the, the streetlights throughout the city. Um, we could, as Alderman Barnhill said, in any scenario, offer to have, ask Middle Tennessee to have more streetlights, but we pay. We, we pay the, the service charge, we pay a maintenance fee, and what we're going to do is start looking at particular neighborhoods to see exactly what that cost is, to see if there's any advantage to us owning and maintaining the streetlights in the, in the future and just paying the, the utility rate. Um, because to make sure that we're getting enough coverage, but also to make sure that, um, you know, we have a pretty talented street department that can maintain the fixtures as well. So we're going to initiate that, and actually, we have an intern from NTAS that is going to come in, that might be a good project for him.
And what Verdant is talking about is way beyond what this amendment does.
This is parking.
Situation where Riverview, about three years ago, after we annexed, they, the city came in and, and had lights put in Riverview because they were, that was part of the plan of services for us to install. And there were some citizen complaints that the spacing of the lights were, were too gray and asked for additional lights, and, and the city paid for extra lights to be installed after the initial, uh, installation. Second question is, why don't we like Cobra head lights? Cobra head fixtures?
Um, we don't like them in residential neighborhoods, and we're trying to get in our lighting fixtures and all of the character of our neighborhoods, all of our design standards go to the character of the neighborhood. We're looking at more characteristic lights in a residential neighborhood.
What if we have a, a jazzy retro place that likes Cobra head lights?
You could ask for an application of standards.
We'll say, yeah, we'll have a separate meeting for that one.
So, um, number 20, ordinance, consideration of ordinance 2011-20 to be entitled, ordinance to rezone 5.25 acres from residential variety. Uh, RX to general office for proper, property located at 22 Mallory Station Road.
Yes. Uh, this, if you all remember back in 2008 when the comprehensive rezoning was done, this property was rezoned from light industrial to residential variety. The applicants have come to us, asked us to rezone it first back to LI, and then we said, um, we thought a better transition might be general office. They've agreed with that, and we believe that this is a good transition from the RX to the LI that is near there and fronting there. So staff is asking that, uh, you support this rezoning, and I believe we have some people here that may want to speak to this. This is the WAKM site.
They're happy. They're content. We'll move to 21 so we can get on with it. Uh, consideration ordinance 2011-23 to be entitled, and ordinance to amend Chapter 5, Section 5.3.5 of the City of Franklin zoning ordinance to revise standards relative to residential garages.
This particular amendment came out of the Plan Commission. They asked us to look at the possibility of changing our front-entry garage standards to give, um, the applicant a little more variety in the way they do garages and to allow for a little more backyard space. We did want to keep the front-entry garage behind the front facade of the property and the roof line such that the garage wasn't a predominant feature, but this was a compromise between the developers and the city. We believe that it's a good compromise, that it will allow for additional backyard space, but at the same time, make sure that the garage is not prominent. It'll be more pedestrian-friendly than, say, just a front-entry garage flush with the building, but allow for another option in the way we do garages in the city. And I think, um, you know, between the development community and staff, we're very comfortable with this. And we're talking about 10 feet back, 22 feet from the sidewalk.
We don't like double garage doors either?
We don't.
We don't. They have to be single.
That's correct.
Number 22, consideration resolution 2011-27, a resolution to reapprove a concept plan for Franklin First United Methodist Church. Is there any question about that one? Number 23, consideration change order number two with WL Haley and Company for the Downs Boulevard, 24-inch water line, and if I could include 24 also, which is a similar change order, but it has to do with reclaimed water.
Yes, same construction project. Both of them are related to...
Same ditch?
Well, not exactly.
Not exactly, but within a close proximity.
Same road, door rub.
Yeah. Um, but it's, it, it deals mainly with the fact that there's utility conflicts. They've had to, um, move over into the roadway some, which has required some additional, uh, patching and pavement repairs, so that's why the increase in cost. They've spent extra days... They've spent extra days, had some delays due to the utility conflicts, so that's what that's all about.
Do we have plans to pave that road after?
Yes. Joe's, present. Have you mailed it yet? No. They're going to be mailing soon and they'll be paving after the project's complete.
I have gotten a couple of calls on that. They have not been on the streetlights, but once they get out, hit that rough road, I've gotten a call or two, or three or four.
Okay. Discussion of Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, Phase II application. Mr. March?
Maybe I'll just give a, time's coming up. We received a letter that's included in your packet from Tennessee Emergency Management Agency that there's over $25 million available for Phase II. As you know, the application deadline for Phase I, in which we included a handful of projects, is submitted. And now we're looking to include another group of homes that were significantly damaged in the Phase II application, as well as potentially maybe another project or two that would qualify. On the back of the letter, that team had said, it talks about some of the eligible projects and when that due date is, at the end of June. And then what, of that 25 million that's not spoken for in the applications, there'll be yet another round, which will be more liberal as far as what the funding may be used for. But I'll let Tom speak because as you can see, the deadline is quickly approaching.
Actually, the only thing I would add to that is, we were looking, again, we were looking at, we had some additional properties that were substantially damaged and the staff discussion, we limited our, the, we are limiting this proposal to the properties that were substantially damaged. The only thing, in your memo, as mentioned, there were five. It was actually only four that were left out there that were substantially damaged. And one of those property owners has already actually sold the property, so they're not interested. So we're now looking at three properties that we proposed for acquisition. And we can bring back, you'll see the resolution in two weeks, just like you did last time, and can answer any other questions you have.
Is this the three more in addition to the first?
Correct, correct. Three more that were substantially damaged.
Substantially damaged is 50% or greater.
Correct.
Okay. And we have a citizen wants to speak. If you'd introduce yourself and...
My name is Jeff Davis. If I could pass each one of y'all one of these. My house does not fall in the 50% damage range as the criteria for the staff. But my house has flooded four times since I've lived there in '86. Actually, seven times, four claims with family. So at the bottom of that second sheet, they mention that multiple times are the houses that they want to address. And so I'm just hoping to be included in this second round. You know, if you're down to just a couple, what's one more to add on to? I think the cost will be minimal on mine for the city versus what you'll be getting. My property is located adjacent to a piece of commercial property the city owns, the water treatment plant. Over the years, I've seen them dig up those lines a couple of times underneath the road going up to it. So if nothing else, you've got a four-acre field to come through directly up there. Between the insurance money that I've already been paid, which is a deduction off of the city, I think my property will fall into the 12.5% in your, I believe it's, what did I say, the $34,000 range. And also, a couple of years ago, the city came through with the sewer line going out there. The city and I still have not settled on that. So that would make a legal problem go away, which may save you...
We would like to have a legal problem go away.
Yeah, is your house the one at the end of the long drive? Two-story? Is it two-story?
Mine's the two-story L-shaped that is...
Did you build that house?
I did not. I did not. I purchased it in '86. And so I've lived there since '86. And I've had water in the house four times, in the Duck Works seven or eight.
Did you know it flooded when you bought it?
Yes. I had to have the flood insurance when I purchased it.
Had you seen it flood?
Well, do you want the story?
No, I don't want the story. If you'd seen it flood, I don't need a story.
No, 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 no.
Because I've seen it flood many, many times.
My father actually purchased it and told me it was part of my salary, whether I lived there or not. Then when I purchased the business, I inherited the house.
Well, I would think that whatever the criteria are, that we're looking at that and if it's second round, third round, $25 million, whatever it is, I think y'all got to look at that.
It is also the only house in the floodway. Now, all these properties that we've purchased in the past have been just in the flood zone. Mine is in the floodway, which Gary's been talking to me for 20 years about what we can do with the house and for the house. He's from Berms and everything else. But this is just an opportunity for the city to...
Which is your inheritance, isn't it?
That's right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, we're adjourned until 7:00.